The biggest thing I know is that she's very much an introvert. She's like a totally different person. Yeah, I think my chairs are confident level and how she's got this social life.
I can't get up at the end of the night.
Track her on the phone.
I'm used to it.
Rammed in here.
No, the desk is.
True, we're not used to it.
I know.
It's so weird. I told Dale, I'm like, I had talked Becky about this. I'm hoping that these tables are a little closer to the wall, but we have that at the old shutdown for COVID. He says 15. I'm like, I've been after 15.
I didn't think the last one was good.
I'll say with the guys in Subway Center also, when they try to wear a mask, they drive together. He's got it, I've got it. He said that you've got it, I've got it. All the time we've come together, we're in this together.
I'm like, that's amazing.
Yeah.
You bit my dog?
I want to do a recognize yourself.
Therapy, not service, therapy guys.
Well, that's a lot of work, huh? I went to take.
Here, I brought a jacket.
Well, I have a, I have a bunch.
How was your birthday party?
It's chilly. I brought a jacket. I didn't remember why. I don't know how chilly it could get here.
I'd like to welcome everybody here and open the meeting for the school board of Amory Board of Education. And tonight we'll start out with, we were in closed session, we'll start out now with the regular meeting. And first thing we'll start is consent agenda items.
I had the consent agenda items. I'd make a motion, we approve of them as presented.
I'll second that.
Sure. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those are approved. Next, we will go to our community comments section, and I'll read the guidelines for addressing the board of education, so you can please follow them. Welcome to this meeting of the Board of Education of the School District of Amory. We are pleased that you are interested in the school district education issues. Your input may be very beneficial to the development of appropriate educational programs. You may address the board only during the community comments session time on the agenda. The Amory School District residents, district employees, and guests invited by the board may address the board at the discretion of the presiding board member. In order for the meeting to flow smoothly, we would appreciate that the following guidelines be followed by anyone wishing to address the board of education. First, for those wishing to speak before the board, a sign up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Comment time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time limit may be increased or decreased at any time by the presiding board member. The time allotted for community comments may also be ended at the determination of the presiding board member. Comments and suggestions related to the school district operation are welcome. Personal criticism of members of the board of education or employees of the school district is out of order. Please stand to be recognized, and after being recognized, please give your name and address for the record. The board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators may get back to you within the week. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda of future board meeting. And I want to thank you for your cooperation. All right, and we've got a few here. First one is Paula, how do you pronounce your name?
Stucci.
Stucci, thank you.
Paula Stucci, Amory School District. I have sons who will be going into 11th, 8th, 7th, and 1st grades. First thing I would like to address is the Critical Race Theory Curriculum. This is very personal for us as we are raising both black and white sons in our household. And I'll add that my husband is assistant coach to the wrestling team, and he is black as well. What I would really like to say is, how dare anyone try to make my white children feel ashamed of who they are because of the color of their skin? That's racist. And what, and that deep down, without them even knowing it, they have racism in them. Racism is not inherent, it is taught. And how dare anyone try and convince my black children that they are oppressed, and that any encounter they might have with law enforcement might be deadly? We don't teach that in my house. And how dare anyone try and convince my boys that they are anything other than what they are, and that's brothers? They are brothers. My children will not be participating with any of this curriculum at all. It is not even an option for us. So I would suggest that there be an alternative curriculum for the kids whose parents will not allow their children to be any part of this racist indoctrination, because that's exactly what it is. Secondly, I would like to add that we have something in this country called freedom of religion. In my religion, God created a man and a woman. With that being said, what people do in their life is their business, it's not for me to judge. I teach my children to have respect for everybody. And if Sarah wants to be called Matthew or vice versa, I'll instruct my children to do that because a name is just a name. But when children are being punished for calling her a girl her and a boy him, when that's really what they are, that is an infringement on our religious beliefs, and I'm not okay with that. I don't understand what happened to science and biology. We are literally teaching our children lies. And our children are being forced to live in somebody else's delusion and being punished if they refuse to do so. It seems like there has been a move away from facts and reality to fantasy and feelings. And I think it's best for us to stick with facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Emily Stell.
Yep, Emily Stell Richardson.
Okay.
My name is Emily Stell Richardson, and I live in Lincoln Township in the Amory Public Schools District. First, I'd like to say, I can't imagine how stressful and challenging this past year has been for the school board, teachers, and staff of Amory Public Schools. I want to take this time to thank you for your dedication and service to our children, families, and community. Sorry. I'm here tonight because I have two children that attend Amory Public Schools, and I want to express my support for school curriculum and library that reflect a diversity of life experiences. One that is inclusive of race, ethnicity, and LGBTQ identities. One that shows our students the multitude and variety of lived experiences in this country. I'm going to mention a couple books to clarify, I haven't seen any curriculum list, they're just titles that I am using as an example. This is not a zero sum game. A tale of two daddies being on the library shelf doesn't mean that farmer boy can't also be there. Little women in a good kind of trouble can be on the same middle school reading list, and I imagine they would make for a constructive and interesting discussion. And I would argue that because there are so few families of color and LGBTQ families in the community, that is even more important for them to be represented in the books and texts of our schools. Important to see themselves and their lived experiences reflected in the libraries on the pages of books. To address comments made at an earlier meeting, just because people may not see actions or hear comments that are racist or homophobic, doesn't mean they don't happen or that community members aren't hurt by them. And, you know, in the rare case that they aren't happening here at all, it doesn't mean that experiences of race or gay people are irrelevant to our community. I believe that to intentionally exclude books and texts that are LGBTQ positive or discuss different experiences of race is in fact more harmful than the discussions they might elicit. We need to be, we need to prepare our students for the larger world, to be comfortable collaborating with coworkers, neighbors, employers, and community members who are different from themselves. We have many interconnected social and economic challenges facing us, and in order to solve them, we will need to work together. Our students need to be able to listen to and be compassionate towards people of different races and different identities. When we intentionally limit our exposure, understanding, and ability to listen to voices that are different from ours, we are setting ourselves and our students up to fail. So let's spend our time and resources creating an inclusive school community, teaching our students how to have constructive conversations that build compassion and empathy. These skills will be necessary as we tackle tough issues such as public health disparities. I'd like to thank a previous commenter at another school board meeting for bringing this up, because it's an important issue and a good example of how LGBTQ and racial inequalities are relevant to us as a rural working class community. By taking a look at lifespans of different demographics, we see that all our populations are facing serious health risks. People who are gay and lesbian do have the life, same life expectancy as heterosexuals, but recent research indicates that if they live in communities where citizens are less accepting of gay relationships, their lifespans are shorter. In fact, in anti-gay communities, LGBTQ people's lifespan was shorter by 12 years in the study, not because of any diseases they caught, but because of the environment in which they lived. Interestingly, to measure anti-gay sentiment, one of the questions in the study was whether people in your community have suggested that a book in favor of homosexuality should be taken out of your library. But perhaps the most interesting result of the study was that people who were in heterosexual relationships also had shorter lives if they lived in high stigma anti-gay communities. Black men and women living in Wisconsin have a lifespan that is six years shorter than average. People living in rural areas have a lifespan that is three years shorter. That data is from 2010, so I think sadly that number might be higher due to the opioid and meth epidemics. And people in the lowest income in the U.S. have a 10 to 14 year shorter lifespan. In 2019, 42% of our students qualified for free and reduced meals. So what does that mean? A large percentage of the families in our school community face health risks beyond the average. These are the challenges before us. They are interrelated rather than isolated. I ask that we give our students a curriculum and a library that broadens and reflects a diversity of lived experiences. One that recognizes that race and sexual orientation and rural communities are not independent of one another, but intersect in significant and compelling ways. Let us be inclusive rather than exclusive, because ultimately, we all do better when we all do better. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Morgan Olson. Nope, Danielle McCall, I'm sorry. She got there first.
She did.
Danielle McCall, Township of Blackbrook, 16-year veteran teacher at Amory Middle School and parent of an incoming 1st grader and 4th grader. Standards-based grading, numbers instead of letters, as some call it, is the same concept that has been used at Leon Elementary for many, many years, in Aim for several years, and is now being used by the intermediate and middle schools. Amory Middle School started really digging into the process of researching the implementation of standards-based grading during the 2018-2019 school year. This isn't something that was done overnight. It typically takes about three to five years. We worked tirelessly to see what research had to say about standards-based grading. We sought out details from other school districts using this system in the middle school. This transition wasn't taken lightly. Also, during this timeframe, Mr. Benson held several informational meetings for parents about the transition process. Any and all questions were fielded and answered. I encourage individuals to take a look at our Amory School District webpage, specifically the middle school page, to find out more information on standards-based grading, our essential standards, and rubrics used to score assessments for each subject and grade level. Learning is a process, a process in which students are trying to reach a learning goal or several over the course of a school year. Thus, students can retry assignments and assessments to show what they have learned. I would bet that everyone in this room doesn't learn anything the first time they are introduced to it. Some may, some may not. Therefore, reteaching and retrying is part of the learning process. A part of the teaching and learning process is formative assessments. From the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction website, I quote, "Formative assessments provide students with information on the gaps that exist between their current knowledge and the stated learning goals. By providing feedback on specific errors, it helps students understand that their low performance can be improved and is not a result of lack of ability. Studies emphasize that formative assessment is most effective when teachers use it to provide specific and timely feedback on errors and suggestions for improvement. When students understand the learning objectives and assessment criteria, and when students have the opportunity to reflect on their work." I would also add that formative assessments help educators form our instruction to meet the needs of our students. Learning is, always has been, and will continue to be, a process. It is quite amazing to watch the learning process unfold when students have a goal to achieve, work hard during the learning process, yes, sometimes fail and pick themselves up, and reflect on their own learning and possible failures in order to achieve that goal they've had in sight all along. I would like to give an example of how a student may earn the numbers. So in my science class, if we're going to study the standard of develop and use a model to describe that waves are reflected, absorbed, or transmitted through various materials. If a student is able to simply use a model to recognize that sound waves are transmitted by vibrations, they would be at the point of beginning in this process, they would earn a one at that point. If a student is able to show a little bit deeper depth of knowledge and investigate changes in vibrations of sound in everyday life, they would be at the developing point of their learning through this process. To be proficient, for example, a student would then be able to use a model to show how light waves or sound waves are reflected, absorbed, or transmitted through various materials, because those were the components in that very first standard I explained. They would be proficient. In order to earn a four, which is possible, it is exemplary, they are showing the highest depth of knowledge they can show. And they would then either create their own model to show that waves are reflected, absorbed, or transmitted through various materials, or possibly could use a variety of models to show this in different ways. Again, the step up. As for deadlines and accountability, these items exist. Students and parents receive feedback every two weeks through our Power School grading portal in each class on the following personal accountability components. We look at, do the students use their time wisely, and do they meet deadlines? Does the student follow classroom expectations? And do the students treat others and property with respect? They can earn a one for needing improvement in any of those three areas, a two for the fact that they're approaching the expectation, or a three and that fact that they are meeting those personal accountability expectations. We are a public school, we are not pushing any certain agenda. As a parent and an educator, it is my job to prepare my children and my students for what lies ahead in a world that reaches far beyond Amory. Our children and students should leave the school district Amory as well-rounded individuals who have the ability to think critically, problem solve, and make their own decisions based on all of the information they have been exposed to over their educational career. From the Department of Public Instruction website, meaningful learning happens in environments where creativity, awareness, inquiry, and critical thinking are part of the instruction. I would ask those of you that think you have issues with what is happening in our schools to ask, seek the truth, talk with our administrators, talk with those of us who are in the classrooms each and every day. Do all of this, and don't assume you know. The spreading of misinformation to the public has to stop. Converse with us, then we can all understand where each is coming from, so we can do what's best for our children and our public school, community, country, and world. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Now, Morgan, you can go. I'm sorry.
Morgan Olson, 501 South Street West, Deer Park. I looked at the proposed district calendar online recently, and I was quite surprised to find that yet again this year, we are taking a full week for spring break. It was my understanding that this would be an alternating every other year process. Given how the past, what, 15 to 18 months have been with COVID, I personally can tell you, I'm a little tired of my son being home all the time. And maybe that's just because of his special needs on top of everything else, but I would like to know why the families weren't questioned on whether or not they want a full week off? Do they want two days off? Do they want three days off? Because ideally, starting before Labor Day, it would be nice to be able to be done with school by Memorial Day, because I personally feel, after having family that have worked in the school district for countless years, that sending students to school for those last couple of days after Memorial Day is fairly ineffective. The children just have no desire to learn at that point, and they've checked out. So my personal opinion was, after being told and basically constructive feedback with other parents that I talked with, why wouldn't we use the spring break days in April around Easter time? We were told so many times over the last several months to stay home, stay home, you're not allowed to spend time with people outside of your immediate family. Why not be able to utilize a day or two before Easter aside from April 15? I think that would be a nice way to do things, because we were told for so long, we can't spend time with our family, extended family. And having, my grandparents having been educators in the district for as long as they were, my grandma complains awful lot about the fact that students are getting a full week off of school, because that never happened in her day. Whether that's true or not, grandma might not remember correctly, but I have heard some concerns from other people within the district. So that is what I thought about the calendar. Another thing that I also wanted to talk about was a little bit more of inclusiveness with special needs children. My son has severe autism, orally's got to see him, and you get to hear him here when he's walking in off the van. He's quite loud and can be abrasive. I think that maybe since we had done an abuse month within the district, it would be nice to do an inclusivity day with children with different disabilities or abilities. We have students within the district that have things like cerebral palsy. We have children on all degrees of the autism spectrum. We have children that are learning disabled but not considered special ed. We have students that have dyslexia. I think it would be nice if we could incorporate a day where the students and staff got to learn a little bit about some of these different abilities and disabilities, so that they could understand how to interact with these people in the real world, excuse me. Personally, I don't sign any permission slips for my son to go on field trips, because that would be a nightmare and a half. He is high energy, and somebody would literally have to leash him. So I think just being able to understand that all children are different, but they should all be accepted within the school is important, and I think it would be nice to see that. So those are my two pieces.
Thank you, Morgan. Next, we have Soon Gunther.
My name is Soon Gunther. Thanks for your time tonight. I live in Alden Township, and I have two young kids in the school district, one heading into 1st grade this fall. I want my kids to learn in an environment and from educators who can navigate the past and present with integrity. Adults that can help them study the good, the bad, and the ugly of our nation's story. I want my kids to seek truth in different narratives than the one they have grown up with. I want them to develop critical thinking, problem solving, and analytical skills. When we know more, we're able to connect and celebrate our differences. It is divisive to want to remain unaware of anyone else's history. I hope my kids are given many opportunities to ask questions. At every age, they are capable of critical thinking. What does it demonstrate when parents are afraid of children learning about our country's history of structural inequities? Do we uphold our constitution that states all people are deserving of equal treatment under the law? Well, we can learn, and so can our kids, about laws and social norms that exclude people or criminalized behavior based on a person's gender, sexuality, religion, ability, age, membership in a racialized group, or class. Laws and policies such as redlining, indigenous land theft, and slavery, because these laws still need to be reexamined if we're working towards equality for all people. What does it demonstrate when local law enforcement repeatedly brings the latest conservative boogeyman talking points to the school board? They've been swept up in a national political conversation, a trend to reject truth. And they want to pressure our district administrators and educators to revert to teaching a watered-down and whitewashed version of U.S. history, a mythical story. The deniers do not speak for me or everyone in Amory. I'm not afraid of new books hurting my kids' feelings. I don't fear them learning about our country's true history or viewpoints that oppose their own. I see this group has begun a recall campaign for some members of the board, primarily because of decisions about masking and the new books purchased for the high school English Why does this group oppose measures taken for the safety of everyone in our community? Why do they oppose diverse viewpoints or learning about the reality of racism? Both your tears and your threats made toward the staff and the board members are completely inappropriate. It's retaliation performed on behalf of personal discomfort. I support the school board, teachers, and school staff for the care taken for our kids and community during the pandemic. I support the purchases of anti-racist literature by our schools. And I support a curriculum and library that expands and deepens our kids' understanding of history, social studies, and identity inside the celebration of many cultures and the changing country that we call the USA.
Thank you. That is the last one for our community comments, so we will move on to our administrative reports.
I'm not sure if you want me to go first, or you want the building principals. There's the elephant in the room of Alicia Monson, I think we ought to recognize. Obviously.
Why don't you take the thunder? Go ahead.
I watch, like many of you did, right from my living room with my boys. I told the board this in closed session ahead of time. The commentators kept saying stuff, and I kept answering, and my kid said, "They can't hear you." It makes me feel better to respond on her behalf, she's working hard. So I was, I mean, I can, Josh and I have talked so many times about this. We saw this girl grow up, and the building principals did too. We saw her great promise on the track, and we certainly saw it this past weekend. I mean, we have an Olympian that graduated from Amory. I mean, we have an Olympian that graduated from Amory and that's amazing. Josh, did you want to say anything?
Well, I know she certainly feels the love and support from the entire community. I got a message back from her today, you know, tell everybody thanks. What a crazy weekend. Ha ha. She always puts that in her messages. But super excited to see what I can do in Tokyo, so. Yeah, we're all very proud of her and she's a first-rate kid too.
Yes, she is.
Woman. Yeah, she's grown up now.
She's still a kid in my eyes. I still remember the days of her walking up to Mr. Gould and myself and asking what time her race starts. Thinking, well, we should probably tell you a different time because no one stands a chance if we give you the right time.
I think you have run on the treadmill next to her too, haven't you?
Oh, well, I have been on the treadmill prior to her and she's admonished me for my error of how I'm preparing and so forth. And I remember distinctly saying to her, I said, "Alicia, no one cares if I get hurt. We care if you get hurt."
Very much so.
I'm old and has been. You're not.
Yeah, way to go. What an accomplishment. Well, I just, if there's, you know, out of all of the things that we've just listened to community comments of all over the board of everything and there's just absolutely just one thing I think that this community could all just agree on and how just overjoyed we are for having an Olympian going to Tokyo from Amory crazy. And there's a young gentleman from Rice Lake also going and how just super exciting that Northwest Wisconsin is knocking it out of the park and turning out Olympic athletes. I just, who would have guessed? I mean, we just don't know what these kids are capable of and to watch them really grow up before your eyes and see them. I saw Bob Johnson had posted a picture of her six years ago, I think it was, to the day of her just running her little Mighty Boy with her glasses on and then you watch her at the Olympics just striding to glory with her sunglasses on the whole time and hotter than you know where and poof, crazy. Just, I mean, shows you the adversity that these young people have, we've prepared them for. And that, I think, sitting here, knowing what we've done, educators that we've seen, watched these kids grow up, just the pride that we all take of watching these people get to where they go. Ah, it's what we do. That's why we knew what we knew. It's just, it can't be any better. It just can't be any better. Anybody got anything else to say?
I think you covered it.
Yeah, we're watching in Tokyo. It's great.
That sounds wonderful.
All right, so that's my report. Go ahead, Josh.
Wow, talk about the Josh Mann model short version of Sean. All right, I've kind of got the Tom Benson model here, a little longer list than I normally have, but they all know it's true. All right, so we kept Pam Robarge in the building darn near until just recently here because our spring sports were still going. Officially wrapped up last week and of course with the prolonged schedule, nobody was complaining about all the opportunities the kids were able to have. So we officially wrapped up our spring sports season last week with a couple of kids down at the state track meet, so that was a lot of fun. Yeah, that was great. I'm just gonna say it was a tremendous end of the school year in general. The students were great right up until the end. Our staff worked tirelessly to get a number of students who were, you know, on the verge of some academic problems, but just tremendous effort by students and staff at the end there. Our gym floor project, all the wood has been removed and the floor is in the prepping phase right now. So we're hoping to have that done probably within the next month, hopefully. I got the thumbs up from Jeff there. If you, as you drove in today, you probably know it's outside of the library in the north end of the high school. They started the wall flashing project today. So that's rolling. Our summer custodians have been very busy with seven new staff members at the high school and several people jockeying for their rooms and room changes. It's going to look very different there and the custodians have just been doing a fabulous job taking care of that. Summer strength and conditioning program has been absolutely fabulous. We have received so many positive comments from parents. We have kids in there who would never be in there participating and they're getting solid instruction and it's been absolutely fabulous. We're running four different sessions daily. It's been absolutely awesome. We've got some remedial summer school programs going out at the high school. We haven't done this for a while and we're seeing a lot of positive stuff there. Students are extremely motivated right now to get their work done so they don't have to come back after Fourth of July, so that's going great. Session one and two of Drivers Ed currently going on, wrapping up. We've got some new staff mentor sessions have been going on already for all of our new staff at the high school. We've had some committee meetings also and I guess I'd just also like to make sure everybody is aware that Mr. Fern got married last Friday.
I talked to somebody that was there last week and they said, "You did a nice job, but you got a lot to learn." Exactly. No, you know who it was.
All right, Thomas, your turn.
All right. Lots happening at the middle school. We're just, we just finished our second week of summer school, started our third week today. I'm excited for that. We have two more weeks of summer school in August plus additional weeks of swimming lessons, so things are moving along. We're busy cleaning every room that is not being used for summer school at this time. Band and parades, our bands have been out and at it and having a lot of success. And from the importance of our Memorial Day parade, which is our first kickoff to the Clayton and Clear Lake parades. I believe the high school's going to be marching again additionally in July. The middle school doesn't march again until Fall Festival, hopefully down Main Street. Gotta bring in some more contrition. We've got a lot of trainings going on, fast bridge software, strategic planning, district data retreats where we're looking at our data and analyzing things. And so a lot of stuff that will also be happening this summer. Also want to throw out a date, our sixth grade orientation and seventh and eighth grade open house is August twenty-fourth. I'm sure everyone's real excited to hear that at this time. I also wanted just to take a few seconds to clear up a few misunderstandings about the standards-based grading at the middle school and intermediate. And Mrs. McCall did a nice job covering a lot of these items, so I'll just cover a few more spots. But just so everyone's aware, standard-based grading is tied to a professional learning community focus. We call that a PLC. And it's a district-wide initiative and it centers on three big ideas. A focus on learning, collaboration, and results. So it's a system where teachers work to answer four main questions. What do the students need and must know in my class? How will I determine if they have learned it? What will I do if they haven't learned it? Or how will I extend learning if that's necessary, if there already are proficient? With standards-based grading, grades are way more specific than traditional grades. Rather than just earning a B in English, which I will oftentimes ask parents, "Okay, you got a B. What does B mean in English? What did they do well in? What did they struggle in?" And I have yet to have a parent that can answer that question. Under standards-based grading, students receive several different grades for each class. So in English, a student may get a score for speech and language, reading for fluency, reading for comprehension, reading and citing text to answer questions, writing, grammar, convention, spelling. All of those things are components that would make up English. They get assessed in all those areas and scored now in each area. So a student may be an amazing reader and get really high marks in reading, but may need a lot of extra help to be a proficient writer. So these parents will know and this teacher and the student exactly where they're doing well and where they need extra work. We evaluate those kids in a lot of ways. It's not just testing. Maybe they do hands-on projects, lab work, papers, write papers and theme papers, speeches. There's multiple ways to assess that learning. And yes, students can earn from one to four on any specific standard area or that skill that's being assessed. There was a misunderstanding that kids cannot earn a four or a one and that is absolutely not accurate. We have many students at the middle school and the intermediate school and I'm sure the lean elementary school who earn fours and show extensive learning in their specific areas on the various learning targets. We also have students that earn a one. But it is true, if they're performing below proficiency, we ask and expect and require teachers to intervene. So they have to do reteaching and they have to work extra with those students that aren't showing growth. And they need to get more help to make sure that they are learning. And then we assess them again and if the student can show with that extra help that they have learned it, then we do improve their grade. It's like taking your driver's test. If you fail the driver's test the first time, you go back, you study, you drive again, and then you take your test again. And if you pass it, they don't average your two scores. They say, "No, now you showed me you did it. Now I'm going to show you and grade you on what you absolutely learned." That's because our goal is to teach kids, not just dispense information. So if they're not learning, we need to help them. Two other misunderstandings I just want to touch base on, that students can't fail. Despite teachers providing additional interventions and reteaching, some students still fail to meet benchmarks and do earn a one. And then we have those students, many of them will get notices. There may be parent meetings where they're required to do additional after-school time to get more help or attend summer school to earn back credits. So I want to make sure that people understand that that's not quite accurate. The other thing is that students don't have to grade or turn in work. Every teacher in every class ties their learning to each specific skill, but they also grade students on homework deadlines, responsibility, and turning things in. And if students also aren't meeting those expectations, then the teacher's expected to get, to start intervening and helping teach them the skills to get that stuff done. Standards-based grading is not a new concept. We've studied and transitioned to this system over a three-year period, as Danielle said. I personally held twelve different parent meetings over three years and then two more last year to make sure that everyone understood this process. Of the seven different Middle Border Conference schools, six out of the seven, New Richmond's left the Middle Border now, but six of the seven, Amory, Osceola, Baldwin, St. Croix Central, Ellsworth, and Somerset are on the standards-based report card. Every one of these schools is a high-achieving school. Off the DPI report card site, every one was rated exceeding state expectations. In fact, if you really study the standards or the state reporting system, the Middle Border Conference is by far probably, if not the most and highest achieving conference in the state. And we're proud that Amory has always had high levels on that state report card. There's been multiple years the middle school is ranked in the top three to six percent out of three hundred and eighty-plus schools in the state on how well we achieved and how well kids grew. So the decision to move to standards-based grading was definitely tied to continuous research with a focus on high achievement. And if anyone has further questions about standards-based grading, I would sure invite them to come in and sit down.
I generally don't talk during your time to talk, but I'm gonna because it's me. And I just, I wanted to have a conversation a little bit about that after listening to Mrs. McCall and listening to what you were saying and reading some of the things that were put in letters to the editor. I think anybody who will know who's watched any of these board meetings, I wasn't a strong proponent to standards-based grading. I think I asked many, many, many questions of you when you brought it here. I asked many questions in a meeting that we sat together personally during a rollout, a pre- rollout. But I'll use my own kids as an example for that. I mean, I don't, I've had four kids go through the middle school here. And it's just never been, regardless if it's a standard-based grading system or a letter-based grading system, it's never been this district's standard to let kids fail. Teachers here care about the kids. They don't care about the grade that they get. They want to make sure that the kids actually learn. My kids were given so many opportunities to turn things in late because taking a zero really teaches them nothing. And so if they're given a chance to turn in something after a deadline, Jen Halbig sat and held one of my kids' hands more times than I can count, going through his locker, looking for homework, making sure that he had his stuff there. They were given chances. This is nothing new. Kids want, our teachers want our kids to succeed. When you really look at, like you said, a letter grade, what is it? Is it a standard? Is it just overall? My daughter placed well in middle school math, very well, and went to the high school in advanced math and struggled mightily. And it was because there was no real way to figure out what she was proficient in. Was it just the things that they taught at the middle school but wasn't ready to learn a higher level? I think that standards-based grading really digs into what they need help with, placement. You'll see it when kids leave high school and go to college. They have to take placement tests to figure out where they belong. I think this really moves us in a direction of really helping kids succeed and learn. Yes, it's a lot of work. It's actually more work for the teachers. It's so much more work for the teachers. But, you know, we rolled it out in a COVID year. We rolled it out with a schedule change. It was probably not a great way to roll it out. Everybody's learning. Change is hard. But I think after time and people really get into this and have a normal year, everybody will see a shift, a mindset change, things that their kids are really learning. And our teachers really need to be commended for taking their extra time to really drill down with these kids and make them learn. Anybody can regurgitate information and earn a letter grade. Learning a concept is a totally different issue. I was not a proponent of it. I asked a lot of questions. I did a lot of critical thinking about it. I've looked and seen what happened this year and sure, we have bumps to fix. We'll fix them because it's Amory and we always do. So I think your examples are great. I think everybody, if anybody has questions, go to the source, find out. There's information there. It's there. Go to the webpage. It's there. So thanks for clearing that up.
Yes, thanks, Shar, and Mr. Benson for that great explanation. The intermediate school has a webpage exactly like the middle school and it has our rubrics and the formative assessments as well, so can easily be checked out on the website. Just a few updates. Our purchase orders for next year, the twenty-one, 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 twenty-two school year are all ready to roll out. We send those out on July first, so Chris D. has them all ready to go, mainly in the area of six through twelve, reading, language, arts. And then also, as the other two principals have talked about, during the month of June, we had a variety of curriculum projects that were going on. Teachers working on reading, math, standards-based grading. PBIS, which is our positive behavioral program, was worked on by many of our teams. And not only just at the intermediate school, but they crossed over between buildings, which is really, that's the summer gives you that opportunity to be able to do that. And like Josh said as well, summer cleaning is underway and our custodians just do a fabulous job. So we thank them for their help.
Okay. As I've shared in the past, the ELA adoption for grades four K through grade five is underway. We are next on the curriculum cycle, but we have spent this current school year and will be spending all of next year in preparation for this major decision for the intermediate school and the elementary school. We have identified an English Language Arts Leadership Committee with representation from both schools who have committed many, many hours already in this journey. We have used research to help us vet highly effective programs and as a committee, reduce the number of programs we review to four. We've done all kinds of research. On June twenty-third and twenty-fourth, the leadership team spent time interviewing these different programs, four different programs. And I was amazed by, we had one hundred percent participation of all the teachers in the middle of the summer to sit on a Zoom and just listen to publishers give us additional information about their programs. And at the present time, we've narrowed it down to two programs and they are not traditional basal programs. And what we have decided is we're going to dig deeper into those programs and then possibly, if we don't like what we find after digging deeper, we may go back to a traditional program. But all four programs that we vetted were highly researched, highly effective programs. And Oral Lee and Jessica and myself were part of that leadership team. So I'm very excited and as we journey through this, we'll be providing updates. And anybody in the community that has questions about the programs, about the books, about anything, please reach out to one of us. We want to make sure that people feel comfortable and we want to make sure that we're able to answer questions that parents might have. It's a very big decision for both buildings. As everybody has stated, there is a ton of curriculum work going on and, you know, my mom and dad, my mom is eighty-seven, my dad is eighty-nine. And they're like, "Honey, what do you do at that school in June, July?" And they're like, honey, what do you do at that school in June, July, and August? Well, I'll tell you what, there is a lot happening. And again, kudos to our staff that want to do the best they can for our district. We have had PBIS meetings. One of our goals next year is going to be compassionate resilience, and I'll be talking about that throughout the year. We had our 4K teachers in to talk about their support system. It's called a teacher assistance process. We are, there's essential standards work happening throughout the building. Fastbridge is our assessment, our benchmark assessment program that we used at the elementary this year, and it's going to extend through the high school. We had a training on that. The Leon Leadership Team will be meeting. We had virtual learning preparation and norm setting. So just all kinds of amazing things are happening throughout the year and, or throughout the summer. So I just want you to know that we are busy, and it's all good. I do, like Tom, I'd like to clear up some misunderstanding on this, of the circulation of books in our district, and specifically at Leon Elementary School. Amory continues to offer a wide variety of book selections for our students. There are nearly 100 Dr. Seuss books in district, specifically at Leon Elementary School. There are 59 in circulation in our library. We have 20 copies each of Little House on the Prairie books, and specifically 10 at Leon, and 20 books of The Lion, The Witch, and The Wardrobe series in our libraries. These books have not been removed from circulation. Specifically, Dr. Seuss is one of my very favorite days of the year. You know, at Leon, we do a lot of talking about authors and celebrating authors. And specifically this year, Dr. Seuss Day began with announcements in the morning. I always share some tidbit or learning. And it started with a Dr. Seuss poem. We had green eggs and ham for lunch that was served. And Dr. Seuss books were on display throughout our library. Our library does a fabulous job of that. And not to mention the learning that goes on about Dr. Seuss, who is really Theodore Gazelle, the author, and that happens throughout our classrooms. So I just wanted to clear that up, because I was saddened last week when I read that letter to the editor that said that they've been removed and that the kids aren't exposed to them, because that is so far from the truth. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I see Brad is not here with us.
He is not.
So his report is posted there, just some items there that he had mentioned there. And so with that, I guess maybe my job is not to make you cry, Orla Lee, but that was your last report, you know, as in.
She's gonna cry later. Don't do it now.
Let her get through the meeting first.
Yeah, one more report.
Take heart. We are going to make Brian cry. Mr. Milber, you gotta cry, because he is, this is his last. So with that, Cheryl and Orla Lee, would you give us the report on AGR performance?
Oh, yes. I thought you were gonna say more about Orla Lee, because she has been crying. Oh, my goodness.
Don't start.
Okay, so you caught me off guard there. Okay. So the AGR report is, it's inaccurate, it represents achievement gap reduction. And you're somewhat familiar with this, because we're required to give you an update twice a year. So I won't bore you with a lot of information. It's basically talking about the primary program, the primary intermediate school program in reading and math. So the next slide, Becky, a lot of writing on it. Thank you. You can't, you probably can't see that anyway. But essentially, we have to report our spring benchmark scores. And so I'm going to give you our fall benchmark compared to the spring, and just the percentages. So in the fall, kindergarten, reading, we were at 61% at or above the 30th percentile. Our goal is 80%. Throughout everything that I say today, our goal is 80%. And we fell short of that goal this year, and I'm going to blame COVID, and I think it's very, very true that COVID impacted what we are doing, but I can tell you, we've made some great gains. So in the spring, we're at 74% at or above the 30th percentile in reading, in kindergarten, and 81% at or above the 30th percentile in math. So we were excited about that. In first grade, our, we started out with 40% at or above the 30th percentile and ended at 57% in reading. In math, we were at 69 at the beginning of the year, 69%, and ended with 79% at or above the 30th percentile. And second grade, our reading started at 69% at or above the 30th percentile and ended at 76%. And in math, 70% at or above the 30th percentile, and 77% is how we ended the school year. As I have, and Orla's gonna report on third grade. As I have stated, though, with our reading, language, arts adoption, and with the essentials, or the the changes in the foundational skills in reading, that is one thing we even beefed up this year. And so we are looking very forward to adopting a new basal or reading program, but we have to get through this next year. So we're doing a lot of meeting and talking about that as well.
Thank you. Third grade, in the fall, our reading score was, and once again, we're looking at 80% of our students to be at or above the 25th percentile. And so in the fall, we had 62%, and in the spring, we had 79%, so just a little shy of that 80% in reading. Math, we were rock stars in the fall, 78%, and 90% this spring. And that's something, as you know, we have been working on for a number of years, and it's just been creeping up and up. And we were just ecstatic with that 90%. So that looks good, but as Cheryl said, we have some things to do with reading, and we're looking at that very intensely.
And it's, reading used to outshine math, very much so. And I, but you know what? I commend that, to see the numbers actually jump from the fall to the spring, and we have to remember that these kids were not here from March, and then all through the summer. That is a long break to take. And this just, I honestly think this really solidifies why in-person education is so important, and not only in-person education, but in-person education with educators who know what they're doing, with a curriculum that looks like it's obviously working, and teaching standards, teaching strategies that look like they are making a difference. So work to do, but we'll get there, so.
We will.
Okay, next we will move on to our informational items. We have the deferred maintenance presentation.
Okay, I'll introduce John and George here. They're gonna tandem this, but mostly John. At our May board meeting, you took action to adopt a performance contractor, which in essence means for someone to come in and to look at all of our deferred maintenance needs. Remember, we have two of our buildings that are 50 years or so plus. A newish, I'll call the intermediate school at 20 years, and the middle school, that's 29 years. There's gonna be issues over that period of time. So Carl Sanderson, who John represents, is gonna share with you their findings, and they're going to, and I'm not gonna steal your thunder here, John, they're gonna prioritize, because you can't put everything down. There are priority ones, twos, and threes. If they were all the priorities, we'd be here all night long. So we're gonna look at the ones, and believe me, when you get done, you'll see that there are plenty of items to worry about just in priority one. If you have questions, you certainly can ask them now, but this is not the last time you're gonna see this information. You're gonna see it repeatedly until these issues are remedied, whenever that is and however that happens. So John, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay. Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. A few things going on in Amory, it looks like, right?
Welcome to the party.
And myself, I'm happy to be back again. John Hoenig with Carl Sanderson. A little bit about myself. Don't hold this against me. I'm a Baldwin-Woodville graduate, right? So, but it is nice to be in Amory. I've been here a long time. I got a hug from Orla Lee. She's retiring. I almost tooed up, so. Been at Carl Sanderson for 26 years now, doing K-12 schools, everything from what you're looking at today and moving into the future. So with that, I'll get right into the PowerPoint. I think a lot of this you've seen already. The dollars, an operational referendum, where your dollars are going from technology to maintenance and security to curriculum and resources and staff, and this is the pie chart. I think you've seen this in the past, okay? George is working on your 2021 projects, from carpet to vinyl, the tennis courts, to clocks, the PA systems, and clock and auditorium lights. Again, I think that you've seen these in the past, from your last referendum. And your 2122 projects, you have some playgrounds, gym floors. You've heard about some of these. Some bands, through-wall flashing. We're gonna talk more about through-wall flashing in a little bit at the high school. Flooring in the classrooms, trazo, and upgrading some middle school classrooms of $700,000, okay? 2223 projects, we have some switchgear at the high school, football scoreboards, gym floor sanding, skid steer, tuck pointing, man lifts, press box, entry doors, and cameras. And we're gonna talk about some of these too. This is just more of an update, right? We'll get in a little more granular on what's to come here. Next page, please, Becky. So now we're gonna talk about what Carl Sanderson did, and LHB was part of this too. We did a walkthrough. I've been through your buildings many times, luckily. I brought a mechanical engineer with me, along with LHB's been through your buildings. And then these are the items that we look at from, I won't read all of these, from site work to mechanical systems, interior finishes, to code and safety items. And we organize these onto a spreadsheet that will get prioritized and budgeted. And that's gonna be a living document we'll use with administration on the school board, and then what we're gonna do with that in the future. And the priorities, priority ones are items that, boy, they should be done in the next three, four, five, six years, less than seven. Because you remember that the school funding system, school districts just don't have dollars to take care of deferred maintenance, especially on a building that's 50 years old plus, right? So what has to happen is deferred maintenance report. You prioritize these items and start taking care of your assets. Priority twos are items that are, you know what, in the next seven to 10 years, we're gonna have to take care of these items. And priority threes are further out, and we'll talk about those in a little bit more. So the numbers you're gonna see, they are not bids. They are budgets. They're from cost history, from experience, from calling contractors we know, or George knows, and getting budgets for those. When and if the school board and a referendum passes, all projects will be publicly bid, whether it's parking lots, or mechanical systems, or roofs. In these costs, you're gonna see, you have to also include what we call an owner cost or a soft cost. Those are your permits, if you have design fees and management fees, testing inspections required by the state, contingencies, right, for those unforeseen conditions. There's bonding costs, legal fees, there's always insurances, equipment costs, and things like that. So that qualifies. If you ever hear me say owner or soft cost, those are what those items are, okay? So I'm gonna go through these quickly, because there's a lot of items here. And if you've got a question about one of them, just jump right in, and I can answer, or maybe, that's why George said he's here for color, so. But he can probably answer the question. So I'm gonna be going through these quickly. There's actually quite an extensive Excel spreadsheet where we put these budgets and prioritize them. We actually, obviously simplified it for the PowerPoint. So I'm gonna concentrate on some of the bigger ones. Obviously, we have caulking, roofing, right? Roofing's not cheap. And the 1967, this is the elementary building, 1967 portion, and there's flooring, the restroom upgrades, and coat upgrades, okay? Obviously, when a restroom gets to be much less 30, 40, or 50 years old, they need, you know, they need some help, just the cosmetic part of it. But then a lot of them don't necessarily meet code either, so there's code upgrades also. The classroom cabinets, because of the age, same with media center, another man lift that it's needed, and the hot water piping, and then heating coils flushed and added chemicals. So that's the elementary school.
Can I ask a couple of questions? What is a one-man lift?
It's just a lift to go take one person up and down.
And so it's just that you would have it at the building for whatever needs?
Like onto a stage or something.
Okay. And then what's the hot water piping to classrooms?
Believe it or not, in 1967, all those classrooms, and yeah, they have sinks in each one of them. They never ran hot water through the tunnel.
They have cold water only.
Cold water. So it's hard to sanitize kids' hands when you're telling them they gotta wash for so long in warm water. They have that right there in their classroom, and they're not able to use it. They gotta go out in the hall, so.
And that was an issue at our high school as well, right, in our special education rooms that, for kids teaching life skills, washing dishes, things like that. There was no hot water there, correct?
I fixed that.
I know you did.
That was a big accomplishment, too.
It was a big accomplishment. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a circulation issue, but yeah, that was, I'm pretty proud of that one.
You should be. Thank you. I was very happy about that.
Okay, intermediate school. So we have parking lots, fair amount of money there. This is remove and replace. This is more than just seal coating, okay? This is something that's gonna, seal coating, for those who, you know, do your own driveway, three years later, like, didn't they just seal coat that? So this is a lot more intensive than just seal coating. There's tuck pointing. Even if you walk in the front doors here, you can see the columns that need repair, and there's stucco repair. There's some miscellaneous roofs, gym floor, another lift, heating coils flushed, building automation upgrades to district standards. So that might even help this room cool down a little bit, maybe, if the codes or the controls are improved. And LED lighting throughout the rest of the building for energy savings. Any questions there?
We did do some replacement. This building shut some lighting down, if I recall.
Yeah, we're about two and three-quarter buildings. We got a good start at the middle school, but it's just this one and about a half of the middle school yet.
Okay.
We used the energy levy exemption at that time, which was great.
Middle school, we have the gym floor, some more tuck pointing, miscellaneous roof repairs, flooring in the remainder of the building, ceiling, scoreboards, the cooling tower replacement, and heat pump replacement. So no, I mean, they're big-ticket items, but not as big as some of the other.
What would all be involved in the gym floor refinish there?
We still sand it right down to bare wood, and then repaint and re-poly. Those heat pumps, the life expectancy on a heat pump is 12 to 18 years. 1992 that building was built, so we've done real well with them. There's 65 of them, and Chuck and I have every one of them named.
Well, and I honestly cannot say this enough, because we took that tour last January, and I am amazed. I don't even, I don't like to even go down to my furnace and replace the filter, but you, I can't, like, where these things are and how they work, you are really on top of it, and I honestly just really can't say that enough, because just the district is very lucky to have somebody that's very dialed into. Four buildings is a lot, and it amazes me all the time. So I really wanted to point out that that's a heck of a job with those. So, thanks, George.
And I echo that. George is great to work with. We work with a lot of school districts in the Midwest, and you're lucky to have, to have a George.
Everybody should have a George.
Yeah, everybody should have a George.
His head's swelling.
I'll help him get out of here.
Hey, you just stop over there. I can see you.
The grounds, we have a press box, and we'll, you know, let's verify the type along with the scoreboard. Scoreboard, you can spend less than this to, if you've been to a football game in Hudson, it's about four times that, but just for reference. The service road and sewer line tie in for the concession stand, I believe, okay? Now we get to the high school, okay? And, you know, buildings do get to a certain age. When you walk through as many buildings as I have in a 26-year career, you can get a feel for a building and how it was built at its time. Were they tight on budget or not? You know, you can feel where the corners were cut, and maybe it's just the times, right, for the referendum, and that's okay. And of all the things I'm gonna read here, and I'm stealing my own thunder, but the mechanical system is tired. And it's tough and expensive to fix, and George is chasing issues constantly, if not weekly, several times a month, I'm sure. So the high school adds up quickly, but from sidewalks to parking lots, there's more tuck pointing. A little bit of story of the tuck pointing. You're doing some work right now, and there's a lot more work to be done. We have a drone with infrared thermal cam- We have a drone with infrared thermal camera. So, and it's a newer camera, so I asked George if we could do a thermal image of the high school at no cost because it was a new toy for us. And it's amazing, the story. You fly it through in early evening, like right now, and you can see the images of where moisture gets into the wall. So you're taking care of the worst parts this summer, which is good, but let's address the other parts before it gets too bad. So that is a big number. Exterior door replacement, the roof, there's a big number there. Flooring, science room upgrades, restroom remodel, same thing, modernizing fixture improvement, ceiling and general painting. Locker room upgrades, fire sprinkler. George keeps asking me, do we have to fire sprinkle our building? Do we have to? Today's code, if you do that much remodeling in a building, you're likely going to have to put in fire protection. Now, your insurance company's like that, so that's, might help you rates for whatever it's worth. Plumbing and piping, exhaust and airflow in the shop area, let's bring that up to code, other exhaust fans in the building. There's the building mechanical system replacement. What's being recommended right now is a low volume displacement or a much more fresh air getting to the classrooms. Fresh air is great, and also filtering the air is great. So it'd be a completely different system than what's there today and new and improved. And we'll talk more about that in future meetings. But you can say, see at almost 9.8 million, that's a healthy number to replace that mechanical system. There's always cutting and patching when you're putting in new mechanical systems, whether you're cutting floors or walls and ceilings, improving building automation, the electrical, just to the age of the electrical and the switchgear, and then when you upgrade the mechanical system, you're going to upgrade the electrical too. That's a healthy number, along with the generator and some other light fixture work with mechanical upgrades. So the next slide, this summarizes into you, and this is the, wow, this is a lot of money discussion, and we'll talk about that more in a little bit. What this page shows you is an FCI, a facility condition investment. So a lot of professional, like a Honeywell or 3M or other large companies, they'll take, what's our deferred maintenance, divide it by our building replacement costs? Because people are going to ask, well, should we, should we be investing in the high school? Right? We're going to ask ourselves, the community's going to ask us. So this is a way, again, you take your deferred maintenance, how much would it cost to replace that building? And you get, you can see from the far left in the green, which is good, .05, all the way to divest was 1.0. So this is how we measure where your building is. So in the elementary school, intermediate school, and the middle school, they're fair shape, okay? They need to take care of your assets so they don't move into that red zone, and the totals are there. And the high school's in that critical stage, okay? And I'm not recommending you build in the high school right now, I'm just saying it's getting to that point. It can be brought back down to yellow if this work is completed. And we'll have to prioritize these together, and I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, and then we have our grounds. So I do show the priority ones and the priority twos, okay? So, and maybe I'll talk about this now since this is up. So what we're going to want to do at future meetings, so with the priority ones, we looked at it professionally, LHB looked at it professionally with engineers, George has looked at it, other administrators have looked at it. We still need to meet with a larger group, maybe some board members. It'd be tough to go through 100 or more line items in a board meeting like this, but we need to prioritize these together. Is it 32 or 33 million dollars in needs? Maybe it's 29 million, maybe it's 28, and, you know, and they move just to, it doesn't mean they go away. It just maybe moved to a priority two or three, and then you got to put it on the calendar like, okay, in 2030, we're going to have to start, you know, we have some of the needs that are coming. So we're going to work on this list together as we move through time. Okay? Any questions about that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, you had the cost estimates, not bids, just cost estimates, working with other, on prior knowledge and what things probably priorly cost in your experiences. With COVID and anybody that knows it's building anything or repairing anything, those numbers are significantly higher now. Were these costs adjusted to reflect some kind of current pricing of what that would cost, or are we still kind of operating under pre-COVID situational numbers?
That's a really good question, and we did include inflation in these numbers, okay? And we ourselves are still figuring out COVID and what the effect is on prices. And the residential is crazy, right? Don't go buy a 2x4 right now at Menards, right?
You can't even afford plywood for a fair sign, for crying out loud.
I know, it's crazy. The, but the commercial industry is different. There are a lot of, in the world I live in, is, which is K-12, there's not as many referendums going out or passing because of COVID. Some healthcare projects were put on hold, so the commercial industry contractors are slower. But then the steel prices are still up here. So, but there's, we have a lot of, we have a new elementary school in Hugo, Minnesota, just, that came in on budget, and we were thankful. The lead time is, you know, six months to get steel, but that's another problem. But you're right. And what we also see happening is a lot of school districts like yourself may be going out for referendum in the next six months to a year, and that really can create inflation too. So we have to be aware of that and keep an eye on these numbers because the most stressful thing to a project is have a budget pass a referendum and then the budgets be tight. So that's a great question.
And not only just the numbers, obviously, and that's what we're working with, obviously, now and what we'll continue to work with, but if all of these things are moving forward and we end up being able to go with these projects and do these things, do we have any confidence that we'll be able to get the supplies?
Yeah. Well, and that's part of our planning, and yes. And part of it may affect schedule and allowing those lead times, you know, to get things. I mean, there's just all types of crazy, even ceramic tile, if it's coming from somewhere different, you know, I can come, sometimes they come from Italy or Mexico. You can imagine getting those materials are very easy.
I mean, just egg parts alone, some things are on backlog, you can't get them for a year. So, and that's obviously right now, and obviously this wouldn't take place until hopefully well past.
I agree.
We get to that point, but it's just things to think about that we're looking at.
Exactly. So that's deferred maintenance, okay? It's a big number and we'll continue to work together on that. So the more fun and exciting stuff, right, and opportunities that, and this will be at your next meeting, I just want to talk about what could be next. So when you're going into like the high school and maybe other work at any of the buildings, so I just want to talk about educational adequacy a little bit, and maybe you've heard a little bit from LHB on this, but look at the quantity and quality of your classrooms. Look at your building organization, look at your curriculum delivery models. Are there other programs and opportunities you should offer? Career tech, that is the buzz right now. We're working in a lot of districts from all the way up to Hayward, who's doing, I don't know, flipping the program upside down, but they're going to add a lot of other opportunities in their career tech. What are other best practices? We heard, I think her name, young mother, Mrs. Olson, talk about special ed, okay? Are there special ed opportunity in need and spaces to help with those students? What are there opportunity for flex learning spaces, student teacher racial, spaces that promote learning, as in Lady Smith, and then, well, the last one, and then I'll tell a story about Lady Smith, and then create a space that staff and students want to learn in. And you have a lot of great buildings, including the building we're in, but it depended on the classroom. I was in Lady Smith, Wisconsin, doing a student task force. We're doing an adult, I'll call it, parent community task force and a student. The students are more fun, actually. Made up of juniors and seniors, there were a couple sophomores in there. And one of the young gals asked me, and we were sitting in a classroom, and she raised her hand, and we were going through a whole bunch of neat stuff like this, and she asked, would you want to learn in this room? And I'm like, whoa. I mean, that was, that hit me, and it was just a boring grade classroom that needed some work. Not all your classrooms are that way, but some of them, you know, have that flexible opportunity for students to learn. I mean, today's learning isn't lining up in a row and teaching, right? It's a lot of student on student, small group, large group, and do they have that opportunity in your buildings? So there's a lot more to work to do in that, but let's take a look at that and find out what those opportunities are. And then also, let's look at community education, early childhood, before and after school programs, other community learning opportunities, you know, let's, what are they looking for for in terms of opportunity? And let's look at some campus planning. Is the traffic working the way it should or any community access and things like that? And in conclusion, I talked about this already, let's refine and realign our priorities and our deferred maintenance. Let's, you know, work with the school board and administration and find out what those are. Let's bounce ideas off a community group. Let's consider a survey in the fall, okay? Highly recommended. It really helps tell the tale when there's something, you just don't know what to do, why guess about it? Let's ask in the survey. And it's kind of an opportunity for that first marketing, maybe you know this already, but it's your first marketing piece, right, to say, hey, we're interested to know what you think, you know? And so it's a really neat thing for the community. And then we'll refine the plan and then you'll consider what you can do from there. So that was the report. Any questions? I hope, all right, clear as mud?
So in July, what you'll hear is a little bit more about the what's next slide and specific dates, as in when we're going to start engaging with the community. And we're looking at the last week of August at first date of engagement, and then after that in September, a couple more times into October. And then we're looking at a community survey with school perceptions, who we've used for the longest time here in October, and we'll see what our community has to say about how they want us to address these needs. And it's the gamut from one end of ideas to the other end. We're not going to do this apart from their feedback. This is after all their school system, where their kids go to school and where they live. We want to know what they feel. So we'll ask.
So maybe just a question. We have priority one, two, and three, but I guess our list, I'm seeing all priority ones.
Correct.
So there's above and beyond, this is just the priority ones.
Yeah, we've actually got a feasibility study that we started four years ago, and I change it sometimes by the month, depending on a two moving to a one. We just didn't bring any of the twos or threes, but anytime you want to see that, that feasibility study.
I think we've talked about it and looked at it maybe on our tour, you know, a year or so, but.
Very good long list, there's a lot of things on there. Because I know you'll leave and you'll say, why didn't he have that on the list? That should be fixed. Well, it might be a two that could become a one.
Right.
The list is long.
Let's be honest about the high school. I mean, not everyone is fully conjuring the reality of the high school. That building was built in 1976. That makes it as of right now 45 years old, and it was built for $3.7 million. The through wall flashing was $3.3 million. So it was a long time ago, yes, and the prices were different then, but was it built on the cheap? Absolutely. And it's lasted 45 years, but it's starting to stumble. That's a reality. We've got some issues.
You know, you bring up a really good point that we saw that, you know, inside, but we don't really, as a parent, I've walked through that school many times, many hours, many kids, and really didn't see the issues that were pointed out to us, the structural issues that are pointed out to us. Because honestly, our, our staff, our janitors, our grounds crew have done a really good job with our schools, even as they age, making them look very presentable to the public, making you feel very comfortable in our schools. I've walked through some schools that aren't very friendly and very nice or inviting, and that's a real tribute to what you've been able to do, but unfortunately, you've maxed really, really well that the public doesn't see it, so.
There are three things that happen at the high school. You drive past it, you go to the gym, or you go to the auditorium.
Yeah.
And you're shipshape on each of those counts usually.
Yeah.
But it's not shipshape.
But instead you start going into the science rooms and the, you know, it's, that's a different story, so.
Yeah, we should consider, you know, maybe later summer, fall of having like a community walkthrough.
Absolutely.
I think we did maybe talk about it at one time and COVID hit, and it never happened.
Take anyone through that wants to go through. It's a trip. All four buildings.
I really think we'll host a show and tell night, I think, with George, if you're willing to do that one night, and Dr. Durfler, if you're willing to go through that.
Absolutely.
We could be there or have a, have a board, a special board meeting scheduled that all of us could be there with them, and that would be an open.
Yeah, a lot of that stuff you don't really, if you're not looking for it, you'll never notice it. And when we had our walkthrough, it's.
That you'll notice. Well, if you open doors, barely in the science classroom, open cabinet doors, then you find.
Yeah, and that brings up a good point that when even kids find out that we're starting to pay attention to some of those heating things, when they sit in that classroom and they, they realize that, isn't a helicopter landing on the road? I'll probably find out things I didn't even know were going on that will be added to the list because they'll start paying attention.
And I think, you know, we need to really bring up the point that, to your story of the young lady in Lady Smith who said, would you want to learn in this classroom? Our janitors certainly don't get enough credit for what they do here to make our classrooms and our school clean and a nice learning environment that provides an environment that kids are ready to learn in. And that goes beyond being clean, but also being a welcoming environment where kids, we've seen this with COVID, that the learning that takes place in between students, student to student, it just cannot be replicated, and our classrooms need to reflect that. So it's really important to the, it's not just cosmetic, it's not being about who's better than the Joneses or the next district, but that this really has an impact on your children's learning. The environment in which they are for eight hours a day has a real impact on the learning capabilities of your child, so.
Classrooms are not designed like we have them now. Things are modular or they, you know, they'll have a cluster of classrooms and a teacher in a separate area. It's almost like a college setup the way they do it now.
Or even just the lighting, to the lighting or the ventilation systems that you're hearing, that residual noise, that maybe the kid in the back of the classroom was sitting back there because they don't want to engage, they're shy, they can't hear the instructor that's going on, but they're not going to be the kid that raises their hand and asks because they can't hear it over the, you know, and they're afraid that they're going to be made fun of, that they weren't paying attention, or it's just such an impact to kids with disabilities, disabilities that we don't even know exist. Those things make a difference. Lighting makes a difference to kids, ventilation systems, the noise, it all makes a difference. It makes a difference to adults, you know, in a room with a meeting, so.
Yeah, we found that in the intermediate.
Or even looking, when we were in the, yeah, in the boardroom in the gym, it was, it was hard.
Hard to hear.
Super hard, so.
Physical space is one thing, to have proper space to teach and learn in, but like indoor air quality and lighting, that's a proven fact. That's not guessing, that's, they've tested students and they do much better, obviously, with better indoor air quality and better lighting. It's just a fact. Okay?
Why won't be so gentle? So we need to replace the high school.
No.
No, no. What ballpark figure would it cost to replace that high school and build a new one?
You know the answer.
I know, I do know the answer.
I'll take it.
Well, and I'm going to qualify my answer, right? Because there's a lot of things in planning a high school.
Right.
You know, in terms of, is it 100% replacement, or do you keep the auditorium in the gym and tear down academics, or do you start from scratch? Or is there a 1,000-seat auditorium, 500-seat auditorium, three-station gym, running tracks, pools? So you can go from.
He's up, now he's up.
Let's build a pole shed.
But you, yeah, it's not going to take long to get to a 60, 70 million dollars for a new high school. So.
Everything's on the table when we start engaging with the community. And what I mean by that, you run the gamut to do nothing, status quo, stay as is all the way up to a new high school, and everything in between. So certainly no decisions are being made here tonight, and certainly no decisions will be made apart from them. Because it is a big, big conversation.
And again, and I'm, I'm here to give you the message and listen, right, for yourselves and the community, staff, and the survey, and we'll follow that direction. I will tell a story all the way in Newall, Minnesota, and we were in a community group, And we were in a community group and we were talking about deferred maintenance and remodeling the high school. And we had a big task force together and we looked at a lot of items. We looked up here tonight and one of the, said, I have a question. Why don't, why don't we replace the high school? And then I put my foot in my mouth and said, you can't afford it. And I didn't mean it that way, but the tax impact was a lot. And so the next meeting came and a different person asked the same question. Guess what? They went for a new high school in the past. I'm not saying that's for Amory, but I've been wrong before. So, so that was a lesson. That was probably 10 years ago already, maybe nine. You know, it's my job to listen and follow your lead and guide to a point.
Yep.
More to follow.
Yep.
Yep.
Need to know.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Thank you, George.
That's not good information. It's information.
It's good to know.
It's information that makes my stomach upset.
Next up, we have our first reading of board policies. The first is the non-district transportation policy and then second is district wellness.
Okay, for the non-district transportation policy, I'll have Jeff join me for some assistance. This is an entirely new policy. The policy reads, and it's new, I'm going to read it to you. The expectation of the school district of Amory is that all district-sponsored athletic teams, extracurricular activities, field trips, competitions, and other events utilize district transportation and transportation staff. The use of non-district transportation, i.e. chartered bus and motor coach service, shall be approved by the athletic director. Booster organizations seek to use, that seek to use, non-district transportation for school-sponsored athletic teams must have the approval of the athletic director as well. Only trips which exceed 75 miles one way will be considered for non-district charter and motor coach bus transportation, meaning we don't take a bus, a coach bus for baseball to Osceola. Would we take a coach bus to Appleton to play state baseball? That's a whole nother conversation. Now, it's not happening often, but we want to have some guidance in regards to how it happens. The only item on the sheet or on this policy that we might want to revisit is that Altoona is joining and they are exactly 76 miles away. So we might want to change it. Or we can't go to Altoona and that's not good. We can change it to whatever we want, but they are new to our conference and.
Eighty.
We could do whatever we want there. If you draw a circle around Amory at 75, it's going to encapsulate most of what we do in regards to athletics. Is that a safe assumption, Jeff?
Hayward's another location 77 miles away. We did take a coach bus there twice last year for hockey. We played them the last game of the year and then our first playoff game. And really, we did that because the kids weren't able to do their overnight trips. They weren't able to go out for dinner like they could as a team. And coach wanted to make them feel special and just kind of a nice gesture.
And remember, the coach bus travel is not a district expense. It's booster organizations paying for that, not the taxpayer.
And this, this student transportation policy only revolves around athletics then or?
It states there, when looking at the.
It's just athletic teams is what it says.
You got athletic teams, extracurricular activities, field trips, competitions, and other events, all that utilize district transportation. So it all falls under the auspices of that. But this is the first reading. It can be whatever you want it to be right now.
And then, so like extracurricular activities, field trips, all that stuff, then if they're using non-district transportation, would that like even just fall under like personal vehicles?
If we have an event that everyone's traveling on their own to, it would be a rare occasion because it's really hard to keep track of everybody when we do that. We usually travel together, participate in the event, and travel home. So that typically doesn't happen.
I guess I'm just thinking like FFA where we go to state FFA convention and then there's personal vehicles used for transportation for that.
Sure, that's a smaller number and a further distance. If they wanted to coach bus that, that would certainly be eligible. But for decades, we have done that in the way you just described. What we're trying to cover is we don't need coach bus travel everywhere that we want to do that for. We want to do it for just special events like state travel or long-distance trips. We don't want the appearances for our district that we've got money laying around. So we're taking coach buses to Osceola because we don't.
Right, I get that. I guess it just, the policy just seems a little ambiguous that way of the use of non-district transportation. And then just example of chartered bus and motor coach service. I guess that just.
I think, I think for clarification, Shar, the idea was to, instead of taking a school bus, not so much parents driving their kids or anything. It's at what point do we allow something besides the school bus to take the students? And, you know, as schedules were being made, you know, in previous years, that 75 was kind of that magic number like, okay, if you want to go to a tournament in Rhine Land or Wisconsin Dells, whatever, that's fine. The district will cover the costs up to 75 miles. But beyond that, you'll have to pick that up. So consider that when we make the schedules. So it hasn't just been for the bus itself. It's also kind of been that this is where the district says, okay, this is kind of where we're drawing the line with what we're willing to pay for.
In addition to that, we want to make sure we're not taking money out of the pockets of our bus drivers. These are, this is their check. If we're contracting coach bus services, they're not driving those buses. They're driving the yellow variety that we typically take.
So this would just be in lieu of a bus? Were there enough people that would have to get on a bus and go?
I guess I'm not following.
Or a van is what maybe you're.
If it was enough people that were going to an event that it would require a bus, that's it.
Sure, like state golf or any golf match, for instance, they would take a van typically unless there's too many kids. But where there's a yellow bus being taken usually, we want, we want them to go in that method. If it's a special occasion like a state trip for state soccer, you can certainly contract out a coach bus and that wouldn't be a surprise.
Okay, well, that is our first reading, so.
Okay.
Are we talking about changing that mileage?
I mean, given that Altoona is now in our district, I would change it to 80.
Yeah.
For the second.
Eighty, eighty-five.
Yeah.
Yep, I would agree.
To get Altoona and Hayward covered maybe just in case.
And those are common trips for multiple.
They are.
Different athletic teams.
Yeah, so we're talking 80, 85. What are we doing?
Wow.
Do I hear 90?
Whatever. Whatever covers us, you know.
80 will cover it, right, Jeff?
80 would cover it, yes.
Okay, I think 80 would.
We'll come back with that one.
There's no other districts that are kind of on the verge of 80?
Yeah, or a field that's five miles down the road from the school.
There's no other.
What if there's a detour? Is this as the bird flies?
There's no other. There's no other conference realignments on the horizon because the one that would by enrollment drop off would be Prescott. But there's no conversation about that right now. And I don't know what's Prescott, 50 or so, probably.
Something like that, yeah.
I think we could just go 85 and like, I think.
Eighty-five is fine.
Eighty-five makes a six.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next will be the wellness.
The wellness policy that you see here is a revision of an existing policy. They do a triennial review and we have to do that based on state mandates. So every three years we revisit. So where you see red is an additional recommendation that's come from the state that we want to add. So the first addition is that all students have access to physical education throughout the school year. Some policies specifically state the number of minutes, but that's not realistic. For instance, at the high school, not every kid has FIAD every single term. And at the intermediate, elementary, middle and high school, there's only so many minutes in the day to have physical education. But we want them to have it. So that states just that. Opportunities that promote physical activity should be made available to community members. We do that through community education. We have pickleball and basketball and many other activities. School breakfast program, national lunch, national school lunch. If you can go up a little further, that's been stricken because that really isn't the verbiage for that anymore. Doesn't look like that. So that's a recommendation from the state, all of those words and acronyms. All food items served or offered for sale to students during the school day from midnight prior to 30 minutes after the end of the school day. We'll meet federal, state, local, and standards for all nutrient and competitive food guidelines. Then you see the rest of the verbiage there. That's in essence, meaning we turn off our vending machines and they're not accessible to kids during the school day. And we've done that for a long time. It just wasn't in the policy. Water fountains and or water filling stations are available in or near all cafeterias. That is true. After obtaining food, students will have at least 20 minutes to eat lunch. That is certainly true. It's actually a few minutes longer. Applications for free and reduced should be sent to everyone. They are, they are kept incredibly confidential. I mean, building principals can attest to the fact when we do our state testing, we have to do the demographic data for all of our students. They don't have access to the information. I don't have access to the information. It has to be explicitly asked for, for a specific purpose. So it's under lock and key, so to speak. The USDA professional standards for state and local nutrition programs are followed to ensure that professional development in all areas of food and nutrition are provided for food service directors and managers and staff. We do that. We've done the serve safe training for the better part of five or six years, if not more. That's a mandate in order to be working in those environments. Under nutrition and wellness, all food items served or offered for sale during the school day should meet the guidelines of the federal government. This does get tricky because you have a variety of fundraising because sometimes fruits and vegetables don't sell as well in your fundraising efforts as does pizza and other things. I get it. But we have to follow the rules of the USDA and they're stating we need to have smart snack standards. So we try and keep an eye on that. It's usually at the middle and high school that they're canvassing the students during the day to do that. Elementary and intermediate, it goes home, mom and dad, and they can buy pizza that way. So I'm just kidding, of course. Snacks and aftercare are served via child and adult care food program and meet the requirements of the program, meaning that Clubhouse follows the same standards as the school system, and they do. Food should not be used as a reward. Teachers may use non-food alternatives. Are we in violation of this policy? I would say absolutely we are in places. Food does turn into be a reward at times. I spent 13 years at the high school and if you're going to get a classic kids a pizza, they're going to get excited about it, I can tell you that. Marketing strategies such as taste tests and signage in cafeteria should be used to promote healthy food and beverages throughout school. I know at the elementary and intermediate, they do taste testing in order to determine what's on the menu. I have three elementary school kids, believe me, if you're going to put it out the vote, they're going to have an opinion about what's going to be served. That's the first question they ask me every day when we get in the van. What's for lunch? So they want to know. It's recommended that schools avoid participation in fundraising and corporate incentive programs to promote a message inconsistent with the goals of a healthy school community. This is a constant battle, certainly. Almost there. The triennial progress report will be posted on the district website. So when this policy is done, it will be posted on the website, just as it has been in the past. And I think that might be the end.
Yep.
And then the date. So this is a first reading of an existing policy, so no action is needed. But you certainly can have some conversation about it if you'd like.
The food should not be used as a reward. Does that have to be in there for?
It doesn't have to be. These are recommendations from USDA. It's not the mandate of the law and you're going to get trouble if you do it wrong. No.
Just given issues, is there any reason that we couldn't just strike it?
You can if you want to.
I would recommend.
It's not going to be a problem.
I just, I know like teachers will, you know, you have candy bars or, I don't know, stuff, right? Even all the way through the high school, so.
It might be.
It's written all over Josh's face.
It's maybe been some ice cream sandwich.
Like all three sentences then, not just that.
It might be unrealistic.
All that red.
Well, teachers may use non-food alternatives as rewards. I don't, I guess there's no problem with that.
That's true, but it's kind of. But it doesn't like make sense. Like why would they, why would that even be in there?
It's a first reading. We can do whatever we want.
Yeah, we can take it out. I just, if we could, yeah, take out for definitely, then you're just not in violation of the policy.
It's not. Okay? Any other items on that? If not, we'll move on.
We did that. We'll go to our action items. First one is the donations to the district.
Okay, we have a couple. The library donation from Heather Green and organizers from the Fall Story Walk donated funds to lean and intermediate school libraries for purchase of books. The second, Angel Fund donation of $500 from Dr. and Mrs. Nickum to the Angel Fund. The staff appreciation bags. The Amory Women's Club prepared a staff goodie bag for Staff Appreciation Week for every staff person. And then lastly, the school forest pergola. This isn't a donation, but a previous donation, and that's a picture of the finished product. And I'm not sure if you wanted to say anything about that work because you've lived that more than I.
Yeah, everybody came together to make that happen and it was just, it was a great, great project.
It really is beautiful. Really beautiful. They did, the class did such an amazing job making that. And I just, I mean, that was dollars that just really benefited a lot of education and a lot of education to come and a lot of just quiet space and a reflection. And what a, what a beautiful gift in a memory for us. Apparently a really great guy, Chelsea, out of your class. And yeah, thank you very much.
You know, one of the highlights in the interview process for Oral Lee's position, everyone from out of district marveled at the fact that we had a school forest right out the back door. They couldn't get enough of that idea and all of the uses that that idea has and we have done. So we don't, we should never take for granted how fantastic that property is.
Yeah, right next to us.
Right next to us.
We have great resources here.
I want to thank everyone for their donations, the Women's Club and Dr. and Mrs. Nickum and Heather Green and the Fall Story Walk organizers for all those donations. We appreciate it.
Cool stress balls. What you need to.
Food motivator.
As a reward.
Absolutely. All right, well, I will move to accept the donations to the district as presented here with many thanks. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, easy one. All right, you're up again, Mr..
All right.
The next item is, in many ways, the first is very connected to the second. First, we need your approval to renew our membership in WIAA. If we don't want to do that, then we won't have to worry about conference realignment because we won't be in a conference. So that's your WIAA renewal. Becky and I struggled with this. We were a little slow on the uptake to try and figure this out where it says non-contact co-op. That doesn't mean it's a non-contact sport. There's no such thing as non-contact hockey. It's non-contactism. We're not the lead on that particular event, rather someone else is. In our case, for girls, that somersault is our non-contact. So.
And I'm confident the year will look different. We won't have two tickets, four tickets, masks, live stream links for every level. I'm hopeful, I mean, it feels like five years ago, we were planning fall sports and then pushing it to after school started. And there's a lot of great things, obviously, that happened. But believe it or not, the WI tournament series is culminating this week with baseball and softball. It's almost July 1. So we'll be a little more efficient next year, I'm confident, without a pandemic. But, you know, we, girls tennis went to state. We had a couple state champions in wrestling and team state champions, obviously. Juleson and Wentz went in boys tennis and then we just had the state track meet. Three participants there that went to state. So we did it. It looked a little different. Appreciate your guys' support, but it was a marathon, that's for sure. So honestly, with this, we have 10 boys sports, nine girls sports on here. The 10th sport for the females is dance. It's endorsed by the WI. It's not a WI sport technically, so that's why there's a little difference there. But there's no changes to this. Just asking for your block.
So you would need a motion to renew our membership in WIAA.
I'll make a motion that we renew our, renew our enrollment in WIAA.
And a second?
Second.
Dave, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then as we've talked, the middle border conference has changed and that's the change.
We are, New Richmond is moving out. They're moving to the Big Rivers Conference. They're a school of over 1,000 kids. It's time for them to move on. They are ready to make the move and we will welcome in Altoona. We already play Altoona in a number of different sports in non-conference action. So it's a good fit for Altoona. The Big Rivers is a good fit for New Richmond, especially as they prepare for their postseason play. This will begin this school year, so that's, that's the update there. Altoona will not be in our conference for football, wrestling, and girls golf. We will actually be welcoming Rice Lake into our conference in 2022, 2023 for two years. They are not thrilled about that, but it is what it is. We have two-year conferences or two-year, yeah, conferences for football, so.
And please know this was not New Richmond being kicked out. This was New Richmond's decision. They've been pursuing this for a long time. They are twice as big as every school on this list and three times as big as Prescott. I mean, it's getting to be a competitive disadvantage. They're moving into the Big Rivers with schools of like enrollment, if not bigger. Some of those schools are pushing 2,000. So it was time.
And New Richmond will not be the smallest school in the Big Rivers Conference.
Nope.
Rice Lake, I believe, will be the smallest.
Rice Lake is, yes.
I mean, it might even be smaller with River Falls.
I'm surprised it didn't happen earlier. I mean, this is, they've been out of our league for a long time. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. It's not even fun to go to their games.
They were two hundred and thirty in the positive in, in open enrollment in the district, two hundred and thirty kids. That's a lot of kids.
We had a parent actually contact us, actually, Mr. Gould, this spring, and it was a sport that we were playing, uh, New Richmond in, and they were unhappy. Why are we scheduling New Richmond? Well, we don't have a choice, a lot of our conference teams, but they were right. I mean, you know, it's, it's not a good fit for them, it wasn't a good fit for us to play that game, they're not going to get anything out of it, neither are we. So we will schedule them in some non-conference sports, but not most.
Okay. So there's no action needed on the middle board conference realignment. It's, that's happened. It's independent of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Congratulations.
All right, up next, Mr. Wallen.
I wish this was cleaner, smoother, and easier, but if you're going to involve the federal government, it's not going to be clean, smooth, and easy. But there is a good opportunity potentially sitting here for us. So I'm going to let Clint explain that, and we're going to have to do a hurry up and wait kind of thing, so to speak.
Yeah, it's government.
It is.
Um, it's hard to believe, we're, I was here three years ago talking about the intermediate and elementary devices, but we're three years into it, time to refresh those devices. And over the course of the last year, or this year, I should say, there was building meetings, and they've become the conclusion, the recommendation is to go Chromebooks for the two buildings. We had multiple issues with the, with the iPads and laptops at the intermediate as far as management and web filtering when these things were at home during COVID. And to fix those issues, Chromebooks was the answer. So the recommendation, the board is to purchase 750 Chromebooks for both buildings. That would leave us about seventy-five to a hundred spares to float between the two buildings for damaged ones or some forgot at home, if they took them home or broken ones or, just we'd like to have spares around them so the kids have something to use. I did request four vendors for bids. Only one responded due to availability. And it was so bad, one vendor told me that the manufacturer was not taking any orders. So we were lucky to even get a bid from Dell was the one that gave us the bid back. They said we can have the devices in a week. It may have to be seen, but we'll see. But the recommendation is to purchase the devices through Dell, 750 of them. Now here's where it gets gray. We have two recommend options for purchasing the devices. A normal lease, be a three-year lease, and it'd be a dollar buyout. So it'd be, the purchase price would be $228,540,000 at seven, seventy, 750 quantity. The three-year lease, there's some interest on there, so the payment would be $78,846 a year, and then we'd pay a dollar at the end of the lease, and we'd own the devices. The recommended option, too, the government has, uh, part of the American Rescue Plan has given a opportunity for education in libraries, Emergency Connectivity Fund, which is $7.1 billion. And in that fund, there, you are allowed, you can apply for up to $400 per machine, per student or staff, as long as you can, it's used for remote education. You can still use it in school, but it's got to be able to take home and use it at home as well for homework. I'm trying to, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. There is some stipulations with it that you can't, like, we had the high school, middle school last year, another school can't just say, I want to apply for this grant or this fund, and they're going to get the money. There's got to be a reason why you're getting new devices. And we are proving, in, when we do the application, we have to prove to them that we need these devices. And one, it's a normal refresh, which qualifies. The two, the big one is internet filtering, the web filter. We couldn't filter these kids like we can with the Chromebooks. I mean, it was filtering, but it wasn't doing the best we want it to do. So those two are, those two qualify as for this fund. Now, the problem is with, with the $7.1 billion is every, every school in America can apply for it, and library. And they made these stipulations, so people aren't just going to pull these ideas out of their hat and try to get this money. It's kind of, kind of, they got, you got to have a reason why you're asking for it. But if there's more applicants and money requested, what they will do is base it on the free and reduced, and your E-rate discount, which started at 70%. So if there's above and beyond the applicants, the money requested, we're pretty much guaranteed 70% of the cost of the Chromebooks we're paying for. So we'd be looking at probably about $68,500 we would be responsible for if it goes above and beyond the amount that's available.
But the savings would be some 150 to 175.
Be about $160,000.
There you go.
The other thing with this grant or this fund is the application window opens tomorrow and closes August 13th. We will not know what we get until the middle of October. But the way they make it sound is we're guaranteed at least 70%. I wish I had a crystal ball, but I'm very confident we will get that. I'm almost confident we're going to get the 100% the way they've been talking, but they just want to make sure everybody's aware that potentially you might have to, you're going to go by your E-rate discount to what you're going to spend. The downfall of it as well is we have to buy these outright right now. So basically, we, you're kind of rolling the dice, but I'm confident we're going to get at least 70% off, so it's going to cost us about $69,000 if the requests go above and beyond the funding.
So the recommendation would be to purchase them outright from Dell, because there are only bidder, if you will, and get it paid for through the federal government Emergency Connectivity Fund, if you will, and save some $160,000. Now, we could play it safe and go ahead and lease them and get them from Dell and call for the day, but the opportunity to save $160,000, I think, is too good to pass up.
Well, and with this fund, they're only allowing devices and internet connectivity. That's all they're allowing it for. And how many schools have bought Chromebooks in the last two years? So, I mean, we were one of them, but that was just middle school and high school. Those people don't qualify from what they say, so.
Well, the price of the lease is the same as the purchase price, it's just we get to pay it over three years, so it doesn't, I mean, the cost is going to be the same regardless, so it doesn't make sense to, I mean, it, I get it, but I would, I mean, it makes more sense to purchase them.
But there's interest in that lease, right?
Yeah.
You're comfortable thinking that we're going to get at least 70%
Yep.
Of $228,000, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, to me, it's, yeah.
Not yet, well, I guess we're using the wrong words, that it's covered by the federal government, that portion of it, we're not going to get.
Like, we'll get reimbursed, I'm assuming.
Right.
We'll get reimbursed, because we already have to spend the money now.
Right.
But we'll get reimbursed, yeah.
It's not an additional, it's your money back.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we, that we purchase the devices and apply for the grant.
And we have a second?
Second.
Dale? Any more discussion? You know this comes out of your budget if it don't work. You understand that?
There's contingencies of that, so we're all right.
All right, thank you.
It's a rocky land place. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, there we go. Now somebody wants a bus.
Oh, yes.
We, we typically schedule a bus person, purchase each and every year. We get bids for that purchase. You see a bid here from Midstate Truck at 119, Nelson at 107, and Wisconsin Bus Sales, which is the Redbird Bus, 105, which is what the recommendation is, and that's what we've gotten in the past. It's up to you whether you want to make a motion to purchase a bus. We certainly can defer that cost, but eventually then you're going to be getting two or three or four buses, and that's not always a good budget line item to have to incur. So we have tried to make good on the, the mission to get each, one each and every year. So the recommendation again is Wisconsin Bus Sales at 105.
What do we do with our old bus, like, if we retire one?
We race it at Cedar Lake.
We're no longer racing at Cedar Lake, actually.
You either consult for a nominal amount or parts, you know, usually a combination of both, so that's pretty much what we do with them, so.
Or when the new one dies on the road because the death froze, and the old one starts up and goes. Had that happen.
Are you interested with all those kids, you want a bus for our?
Sometimes I need a bus.
Especially when you're looking for a good user.
Start hauling all the friends.
Well, ever since we've been on the board, it's.
It's every year.
You just, you keep up with the fleet, and it always looks great, and that's a plus for our school.
I would agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would make the motion, we, we approve the bid from Wisconsin Bus Sales.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, motion moved. And second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's passed. Now let's hope they can get us a bus.
Yeah, it'll take a while to get here. It's a good four to six month process.
Now we have insurance.
Okay. This is the Lead Home Insurance Renewal. Andy and I met with Jim Lead Home last week. The premium there from 2021 is listed right next to 2122. You'll see that it is a price difference of approximately, um, eighteen-ish thousand. There are a couple of differences. The biggest difference is probably workman's comp. That's not a number that is really within our control. I mean, things happen over the course of a school year, and that's going to change your rate. So that, the recommendation is to go with Lead Home into re-up, and this would be the premium. The second page breaks it down even further. There, it's really pretty straightforward. What I'd like to draw your attention to is the third page, the Crum and Forster, which is part of the renewal at Lead Home. This is an item that we had to actually do some research on. This is an environmental quote that you're by law, you have to have environmental insurance. Back in 1998, there is an undescribed, according to Jim, event that occurred on campus where there was a leakage of a product over by the, where the bus garage was, where the gas tanks are, and now everything's been put underground. Jim didn't remember that occurring, there's no document that it occurring. All he knows is it happened in the summer of 98, and that's the reason you have to have insurance for events such as that. We would opt for the two-year, and that it results in a better rate over, over the two years. So it's up to you whether you want to go with Lead Home. We've gone with Lead Home for decades. My recommendation would be that you continue to go with Lead Home.
And while you're looking, I'll point out one more thing, too, in the second page, the experience modification, that's really what, the benchmark for that is the 1.0, and we've come up a little bit, but we're still well below the comparison to anyone else in the industry for how we, and that's a reflection of safety practices in the district, among other things, but that's really a good number still from what Jim was telling us, so.
And Jim would know, he's been doing this for a long time. We're in good standing in the insurance world.
Yeah.
We are doing really well, according to Jim.
The property, excuse me, the property premium for the 2122 year is just about $7,000 there. Increase, is that just due to what?
While did Jim speak to that?
It was, well, we purchased some land that went into that, goes into that, and then just didn't normally increase based on our modification, our mod percentage, so if you want to get it a little further, we can have him come in and speak, but I think it's pretty in line with what, we're actually doing better than other districts for where we're at for increases, so, um, like I said, he was very happy for where we're at and is negotiating, negotiates with them, and he does a really good job for us with negotiating with them, because that's a big part of it, so.
I guess, I'm not questioning that, I'm just questioning why, I mean, what went into that $7,000 jump? If it was buildings up, you know, upgrade, or is it the land?
We just purchased all that land.
Yeah, I can't imagine that would be $7,000.
But that was the full 7,000, it's just a normal increase plus additional addition for that land, I would say would go into that without, I can find, certainly find out for you what the increase was for and get that to you. It's not a problem.
Do we need to make a decision today? Because it has to go into effect in July 1st.
Yep, we do need to make a motion if this is what you want to do. This has typically been at the June board meeting, and each, each school year that it needed to be done. But if you wanted to table it, we would make those accommodations to do that.
No, I guess I just had a, it was just a general question, I.
Andy and I will hunt down the answer as to how that happened.
I'll make a motion that we approve the insurance premium with Lead Home.
All right, and a second?
Second.
Jar? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nope. All right. Now we got the budget proposal.
Yes, uh, this is unfortunately, um, a fairly complicated topic. Trying to, I'll try and boil it down the best I can. The way that a state budget works, it's on a two-year biennium. We're at the tail end of that two-year biennium, the 2019 through 2021 budget. So the next one, obviously, is 21 through 23. It begins in the Joint Finance Committee, Joint Finance Committee, meaning it is the Assembly and the State Senate together, Democrats and Republicans together having a conversation about the budget. They get a proposal from the governor, they look at what the governor has to say, they make a proposal of their own, and then it goes to the Assembly and the Senate, and they vote on it. It has gone through Joint Finance Committee, they have made their recommendation, and now the Assembly and the Senate have to weigh in on this. It's said to be the case that within the next two weeks, they'll make a decision. There is a dramatic difference between the governor's budget and the Joint Finance Committee's budget as it relates to school finance. So I'm going to walk through this, and you'll see what those differences are. Before I do that, please know that the budget is also connected to the federal government, the E S S E R money, that federal stimulus money that school districts have received across the country, it's connected to that as well. So in March of 2021, Congress provided Wisconsin K-12 students and schools with the opportunity to receive 1.0 billion in pandemic relief to combat the learning disruptions caused by COVID and help pay for other pandemic-related expenses. We are one of those districts, we have used money from the federal government to pay for COVID expenses. Whereas in order for the state of Wisconsin to qualify to receive that funding for its students and schools, Congress required the state to maintain the same proportion of expenditures for K-12 education that it had provided in previous state budgets. This is where we go off script, so to speak. The state of Wisconsin clearly has money available in the Treasury, they actually have $4.3 billion in the Treasury presently. Wisconsin's Legislature Budget Writing Committee chose not to approve enough state funding for K-12 education to meet this federal requirement, so we are not eligible to receive from the federal, federal government, the E S S E R dollars unless they change the budget that Joint Finance Committee has passed. The 128 million the Wisconsin Legislature's Budget Writing Committee proposes to spend on K-12 education over the next two years is not even a half of what the nonpartisan Legislative Fiscal Bureau reports is, is necessary to secure the federal money. And this proposed level of state funding for K-12 education jeopardizes the very COVID relief, federal COVID relief funding that lawmakers are counting on to fund schools over the next two years and to relieve them of the obligation to further invest in schools with state dollars. Many lawmakers were quick to put out newsletters to their constituents claiming credit for securing 1.5 billion dollars in federal money to, for their students and staff. And the Wisconsin Legislature's Budget Writing Committee placed $350 million of state dollars into the state's Budget Stabilization Fund, Rainy Day Fund, for available in future, for, to fill future education funding gaps for education or, and this is in bold, any other purpose. So let me stop there, and I will say it as clearly as I can. We are not eligible to receive the federal stimulus money unless the state does something different with the budget. In addition to that, the money that they are setting aside may very well go for something altogether different. And in addition to that, the state has proposed a zero dollar per people increase in the state of Wisconsin. All of those factors combined, if all of those factors occur, this district would be some $1 million in debt as recently as two or three years from now. $1 million in debt is staff and programs. So we, as a district, I believe, should be strongly, strongly opposed to the present state of the budget. So I will continue from there. The U.S. Department of Education has warned the state of Wisconsin that placing $350 million into the state's Rainy Day Fund won't help Wisconsin qualify for 1.5 billion in federal stimulus funds. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards has been asking WASB members and lawmakers to support four state budget priorities, inflationary spending increases, significantly higher special education reimbursement, additional mental health categorical aid, and steps to mitigate pandemic-driven enrollment drops. The state enrollment in public education is down 15%. We're down approximately 15%. Whereas the, if the legislature were to rework, rework the proposed state K-12 funding plan and use a portion of the 350 million directed to the Rainy Day Fund to meet these priorities, this potential loss of massive amounts of federal funding for K-12 in Wisconsin could be avoided. Lastly, the School District of Amory, Board of Education calls upon lawmakers to rework and pass a state budget bill that provides the state funding for K-12 education necessary to qualify for the state's, state of Wisconsin to receive its rightful share of federal COVID of federal COVID relief for K-12 education and properly fund our state's public, public schools. So bottom line, what I am saying as a recommendation to all of you is that our lawmakers, and in this case, State Senator Rob Staffold and State Assemblyperson Gagbag Nafishi, to vote no for the present state of the budget. Increase per people expenditure for, per kid, and do what is necessary to get the federal money. If we don't do that, us and everyone around us in the state of Wisconsin is going to face a budget cliff. The budget cliff, meaning the federal money is gone and there's no three hundred and fifty million dollars, three hundred and fifty million dollars waiting. You are going to have to balance your budget by cutting staff and programs or going to referendum, and neither of those is a good idea. So it's time to go back to the drawing board and fix what's done. That's what this resolution says, and I'd be happy to take any questions, but the questions should better be asked for our elected representatives, because this is a really bad idea, what they're seeing.
Can we take back that bus?
Can we take back the bus? The bus would not cover the shortfall that we would have if this is what they do.
Have they indicated any reasoning for this at all?
Because the federal government has got you covered. But here's my inclination about that. When have states, including the state of Wisconsin, relied on the federal government to balance a state budget? That's completely contrary to everything we should be about as state rights, states' rights. And in my mind, this isn't political, because both sides need to step up. But the Joint Finance Committee is controlled by the Republican Party, and I know how they feel about states' rights. And they know full well how they feel about it as well. It is a bad idea to rely on the government, the federal government, to do this for us. We should take care of our own business, and we have four point three billion dollars in our state coffers to be able to take care of this. So it's up to them to do their work.
And where is that, that three point four billion dollars? It's just sitting there?
It is sitting there, that is correct.
They haven't, they haven't allocated that out to-
It's four point three billion dollars, which will become property tax relief for taxpayers, and we want that. But I don't think our property taxpayers, our taxpayers, want that at the expense of public education. I don't think they want that. Maybe they do, but that would not be my hunch.
And, and the thing to remember, that even if they do vote to spend enough money to meet the requirements to get the federal money, it gives no new money to school districts. It's just shifting the money, that's kind of what we were talking about, shifts the money from taxpayers to the state, you're not getting any new money.
No increase for people.
That, that's the big confusing part, too, I think, a little bit, is it seems like they're spending more money to get this federal money, but they're, they're not, it's not any new money for districts, and I guess that's the, the thing to remember as well, so.
So this money would provide property tax relief. Would that provide tax, property tax relief to everybody across the state?
That's up to the state, they haven't said what they're going to do with it. That's the inclination that the lobbyists have heard, that they're going to use that for property tax relief, but there's no formal plan for how that's rolled out. I don't know.
And out of all the property taxes collected of all the property in Wisconsin, I can't believe that would be a huge savings to each individual property owner.
I've never seen a cost analysis of what that looks like. I'm simply coming at this from the perspective that you can't cut, cut us off at one path and then cut us off at the other and expect us to have good options.
I, I guess I'm thinking of the heart, you know, the stark reality is if that, if somebody's thinking they're going to get a property tax break from the state, but then we can't have enough to cover our budget, and if we have to levy tax increase, does those offset? Does it actually end up impacting our local people more than it would-
It's impacting us more because there's a revenue cap limit. We can only ask for so much, so many dollars from our taxpayers. So what you have to do then is go to referendum. And people go to referendum for other reasons, we just did that for a half hour here.
And so we have in the, in the one point nine million dollar recurring referendum that we have, went to, to bat for, we have, and we have always designated those areas, certain amounts of money in each area. Is that possible, that we can shift from one line item to staffing?
You can, but my, my estimation is this. When you go to referendum and you ask your taxpayers to help you as a school system, you tell them what you're going to do with the money, and you do exactly what you said you were going to do, which is what we did in April of two thousand seventeen, and I wouldn't want to stop doing that now. But if we're forced to, we'll have to let our public know, here's why. I'm here right now, we're here right now telling our public, this is a budget cliff that's being created by our state, and it is not a good idea. It has universally been condemned throughout all school systems in, in Wisconsin. People are very fearful of this action. It's not a good idea.
And also, every school's different in what, A, they're going to get through S R. Some are in a lot worse shape than us, some are in a little better shape than us. Then, I guess that, there's no uniform with that, and then there's also, say we qualify for the S R, that we get that, there's so, there's a lot of stipulations in how you have to spend that, too, so.
I understand.
Just saying, oh yeah, we're going to use that money to balance our budget, isn't that easy. It's, it's, you have to spend twenty percent on this, you have to spend five percent on that, you have, you know, there's just, it's not a clean way to do it.
I understand, and I, and I'm not, I'm not, this isn't a discussion about what are, what we're going to do actually here, but, I mean, we have, we have people here that'll be very nervous, I, I'm very nervous about balancing a budget and, and making that balance, but, making that budget balance with regards to staff and cutting staff. So what I'm throwing out here right now is options, and if we had to move money, if this doesn't, because we have no control, we're just asking, but this is in the legislature's hands, so this seems like a good time of any to throw out some options and some questions to say, if we had to, can we ask the public to say, yes, we have designated this amount of money for these projects, but this is what has happened, and we would like to maintain our staff, retain our staff, because it's, it's awful hard to just cut staff for a year or two because those budgets change so much, and then bring them back.
I'm not interested in balancing the budget on the backs of the state. My first interest is to get this budget to be a little different than it presently is. If they pass this, that'll be an item on the docket in July, we'll start that conversation. We're fine for the existing year, the end of this budget year is Wednesday, and we will likely be, be fine for next year. It's beyond that where there's a lot of question. So we've got some time to make those decisions, but they have limited time to make a change in what they're presently doing in Madison.
And I've heard that they did come up with a, a new recommendation that would ensure that we have those, get those S R funds.
They have not received confirmation from the, from the federal government, from the Department of Education stating that. I have not seen that. That's not a for sure.
But I definitely call, I called, you know, our representatives and expressed my concerns about their, you know, this budget and, and expressing that I really needed them to consider supporting our public education, our public schools, so. Do what I can, and this is another thing I think we can do. I think we can pass this resolution and just be, let it be made known that as a school district, we are calling upon our legislatures to fund our, our schools, our public education in Wisconsin. So I'll make a motion that we sign this resolution. Again, it's just a matter of making our wishes known, but I think as a school board, we can express our desire for their support.
Second? Char? Second? Okay. Any more discussion? The only thing I can say is usually when the government gives money, there's a string attached. And I, I'm just wondering what, what, if that's what the state Joint Finance Committee is wrestling with, or something that we don't know.
I get nervous when they say for other reasons, and I get very nervous when I see that. That doesn't sound so certain to me.
Yeah, yeah. But we need to send our voice there, so.
I've talked, I've talked to both of them.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. All right, now we go to our staff contracts.
Staff contracts, these are administrative contracts and non-certified staff contracts, meaning they're not teacher or support staff contracts. So it's the folks sitting in the room, and it's other service administrators on the administrative team or on the district team, such as transportation, food service, et cetera. So those contracts, you need to approve, they're issued, and then they become active on July first, which is, I think, Thursday of this week.
I will make a motion that we approve the staff contracts, administrative and non-certified staff.
Second.
And then second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay. And now we're going to go to closed session.
Oh, we got personnel.
Personnel. Good try, though.
Personnel, we have new employees, Deborah Handy for bus driver, resignation from George Fowler, J V softball coach, and Stacy Nelson, direct, Nelson, Director of School Nutrition. So that's the personnel that you would need to approve.
Thank you for coming to drive bus. We are always appreciative of a new bus driver.
A bus driver, yay.
And then lastly, a couple of months ago, you did accept a retirement letter. You could, I guess, re-nig on that now if you wanted, for Orlie, but she might be going anyway. And she wanted to say something, so go ahead, Orlie.
I do. I wrote it down. It has been both an honor and a privilege to work for the School District of Amory for the last thirty-four years. I have had the opportunity to work with many school board members, teachers, district staff, and of course, thousands of students. The Amory school system is an exceptional educational program. We have under, we have overcome many obstacles, both expected and unexpected. It is what we do best, always with the common goal of we do what's right for kids. The Amory administrative teams' drive and accomplishments are second to none. Dedicated, intelligent, compassionate, and hardworking are just some of the adjectives that would describe this group of individuals. I have complete confidence in this team, with the addition of Mrs. Di Ambrogio, will continue to excel to new levels of excellence. I was so fortunate to have been surrounded by these amazing people. Way back in nineteen eighty-seven, yes, Tom was in middle school. The first year I taught third grade at Leon Elementary School was also my mom's last year of teaching. Between the two of us, we have dedicated over seventy years of service to the School District of Amory. She was, as well as I am, so very proud of the work that we did and the people we were able to work with. Several years ago, I found a quote that truly describes how I feel about my educational career. It goes something like this. "It does not matter where you go in life, it's who you have with you." I have had the extreme good fortune to be surrounded by many, many amazing people along the way. I thank you for all of my opportunities, and I will always and forever be a proud Amory warrior. Thank you.
Well, we are going to greatly miss you, Michelle, you have been fabulous, so.
And right in your last meeting, you got a zinger in on Tom, I mean, seriously. Right to the end.
He's so easy to pick on. No, really, a heartfelt thank you. I mean, this is what we're about, and you exemplify that. You just, you raise the bar and you meet it again and again, and it is about the kids here. Yeah. And we will continue, and you'll keep watch over us, won't you?
I will.
Yes, good, good. Thank you so much.
I think that brings us to the end.
Yep. Need a motion?
A motion to go into closed session.
Motion on personnel.
Personnel.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve personnel items.
Second.
Now, all in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
And the second?
Second.
Aaron Char, and roll call, Aaron?
Yes.
Char?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.